...three oh four.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so here motion to adopt agenda.
I saw on second.
On waiver, aye.
Aye.
Uh, meeting number four, uh, council goal is standing.
Mike, are you on?
Hi, Mike.
Hello, sorry, I'm Mike.
It's all right. We're here.
What we're doing. This is how it's going.
You okay?
Where's your old one? Where's your new one?
I don't have any.
Yes, I did in your box, Ray.
Oh. Oh, there you go.
It's here, Ray. You want this part? That goes with it.
Oh, it's a good place.
Probably needed.
I have all that in my holder.
Oh, okay.
We ready to go, guys?
Okay.
Okay. Uh, first thing on the discussion items is financial statement ending December thirty first, two thousand seventeen.
And they are a bit late, as you know, you have seen the new packet for a while. We've finally, uh, Shelley was able to put everything together. I think we've done our journal adjustments and stuff so that everything is correct. There may be a couple of things we still have to change, but ninety-nine percent of it is now correct. So this should, and we just thought by having it in a work session, we can kind of go through it so you guys can know where we are. Questions, and just kind of go through a little bit.
Well, if you, and I know this is probably a stupid question, but just go across the top on page one and explain what all, what each one of those titles are.
Okay, so period actual, you mean that?
Mm-hmm.
It means where we are right today, like in this period. So in January, it will be on the next, that'll be that period. So it's, it goes month to month for period actual. So this would have been December.
Okay.
And then year to date, where, what we received, year to date.
Right.
What we budgeted last year when we adopted the budget, and then what has not come in is unearned, and then it'll give you a percentage.
You mean has not come in as income?
Income on this one, because the first few pages are going to be revenue.
Right.
And then the next ones are going to be expenditures. And it's all compared to the budget. So, I think by, uh, page three starts, or page seven, I guess, starts with the expenditures.
Right.
So, and, um, as of December thirty first, we should be about fifty percent. Will be higher in some things, but as far as the percentage that you look at to compare, it should be close to fifty percent. We have made the transfers and that type of thing, so that will show a hundred percent in those areas that we budgeted and we made the transfers.
So the unearned is, some of that is, um...
Yeah, it's not in yet.
We haven't got in yet, but we don't know what exactly what the amount will be, which is basic, and I asked this for you.
Well, and I'd like to say that budget, uh, where we started with fifty thousand dollars as a beginning fund balance, um, that is kind of to get us through for a little bit. You know, you have to have, um, that appropriation to get us through for the next year to start up. You know, each year in July would be a startup, so that's, uh, so we budgeted fifty thousand. Um, I think some of our investment earnings will be a little bit different, but they're spread out now throughout the whole document, not just, uh, general fund, so.
And, uh, where it says budget, um, beginning fund balance, we won't know what the beginning fund balance is from last year until we officially close this sixteen second, and that has tabbed down. So that number, we think it's about fifty thousand, it won't come through, it will show until we close the last fiscal year.
So on some of these percentages, um, well, let's just say the property tax for prior years, uh, we had in there a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty, but part of that portion is for the water, the debt that we owe the obligation bond, general obligation bond.
Mm-hmm.
So instead of it being in just fund, uh, ten forty-one, two hundred, it goes back and is in the actual, the last funding of the budget that you have. Should be, is that what it says? Am I, sorry, sorry. But we're actually over budget on, uh, estimated revenue coming in for property taxes this year. So, you know, instead of six twenty-one, we have six twenty-nine, so that's a good thing. And then, um, just so you know, on this licenses and franchise fees, you'll see a negative nineteen thousand, twenty-eight dollars. That was because it was put into the wrong fund, so we, um, adjusted that into the correct one. It's still under that portion of licenses and permits, but it shouldn't have come out of.
With that little franchises thing, right?
Yes, so it should not have come out of, um, the license and franchise. I believe that was specific powers.
Yes, it was a specific power bill.
It was a revenue that came in, but was just postponed. So those are the types of things that we've been doing for the last few months.
So on license, what you're doing is cleaning things up, putting it where it should be so that
Yeah.
at some point in time, we will know exactly where we stand, and we're getting pretty close, right?
And we, we are close enough that the bottom line is pretty much accurate, which is why we're showing these two now.
Good.
The other one to show is near the bottom under governmental revenue. Um, marijuana revenue tax, if we received eighty-five hundred dollars so far this fiscal year.
And I had no idea when we were doing the budget, what to even estimate.
So we could have actually gotten eight thousand.
We have actually gotten eighty-five hundred dollars, yeah. And that's not counting when it goes on the ballot in November, you know, this next year, what will get that three percent or whatever about.
Of course.
That's not too bad for just our first.
Do we continue to get payments on that monthly, or is that?
Quarterly.
Quarterly.
And so this eighty-five represents the first two payments.
Yeah. I think we got one June, one September, wasn't it?
Yes.
Oh, it should be going up, I get more people that.
Well, and right now, we're looking at three different shops that are already in town proper, um, so, um, we'll have.
Is the third one, this one over here, sorry?
He has to come through. He has to come through planning, yes.
Actually, they got part of them uncovered, but.
But he still has to go get his looks for him, sign off on him, that's what the marijuana OLCC requires.
I was going to say, he doesn't have OLCC yet, or?
No.
None of them do.
None of them do.
Yeah. When they can't sell any.
Yeah, well, they can't get an inspector from OLCC to come down and inspect the buildings right now. That's the biggest problem, so.
I hear they're very busy.
But, uh, they're all waiting for that, and so I checked last Friday on the OLCC website, and none of them have gotten their OLCCs yet, so, but they will be.
And the band of people are still coming?
Cause I talked to David a couple weeks ago, or maybe Bernie last week, he was in my office, so, yeah. He was still planning on it, and then with her, her part, and then the amp sheet.
On the next page, and it said this on each other of them, under, um, let's see, ten forty-five, two thirty-five, PERS deferred, what exactly is that?
Ten what?
Forty-five.
Page seven?
Page two. Oh, oh, page seven, it's, it's changed, okay.
I don't know.
That's deferred, five eighty.
Okay, it says PERS deferred, right. And then the law was that we had to set aside an X amount of dollar for PERS employees.
Okay.
You know, um, I'm not sure quite all how it works, but we had to set up an actual line item that says PERS deferred.
So that's to pay in.
Tractor, but it's not, I guess, more of just a, I think a fee, no, if you think about it, because PERS is already being paid.
It's coming out.
Yeah, it's already being taken out, so I'm not, it's a liability is why we have to have it in the financial information.
But I noticed it said that, you know.
All of the salaries.
Yeah. I wasn't quite sure what that meant.
But PERS came up with that, and it's in the audit report, I'll have to bring it out and reread it, but it's one of those you have to for a PERS type of thing.
So now this, um, four thirty-seven on, on page seven, that LCP rare?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what we decided on last meeting?
What, um, I already had given them the twenty-five hundred, and then they had requested that was, and that would have been for, um, uh, LCP itself. And then they are supposed to give us a letter and requesting that other twenty-five hundred dollars that we set aside would go to the new position they're making that was not rare, but is a coordinator or whatever.
A hired, they're, they're hiring them.
Right. Yep.
And the damn fees under the very bottom line.
It's a permit fee, I don't have to have stuff in a general fund, why it's not in Boulder County.
Well, that's what I was wondering, well, not even in Boulder County, but in, I mean, the, um, well, Boulder has its own, own, um, huh. Do we still have a Boulder County budget?
Yeah, but I don't know why it's not.
There is an identical dollar amount of damn fees in the Boulder County as well.
So it's kind of silk.
So I don't know why it's there, but it's on the budget even though we haven't expended it.
Yeah.
We might want to.
We did have to pay of, of the.
I think it's, it is a permit fee for some, yeah, I think it's, I'm pretty sure that's what that is for.
Yeah, I know that's what it's for.
And that amount.
Was just wondering why it was in this general fund.
That's, I follow what grade, and some things are maybe I should do, we did, but it's, over the key.
Before, you got to get to it before your eyes cross at some point.
I know.
Start over at that point. On legal services, um, so we have the contract which we paid Monday, I assume, to, uh, Mr. Edlin.
Mm-hmm.
And then we go above that for what?
Okay, let's just say that I, we're going to negotiations again, we hire an outside cons, um, attorney for something come up that is outside the scope of the retainer, and that would go into that portion. Um, last year when we did negotiations, we used the local government personnel institute attorney to go through the negotiations, because they specialize in that. And it cost that twenty-seven fifty, I think it's about that price.
That's always good to go to experts.
Yeah, well, I do so. And I, I know that our attorney has done negotiations and stuff, but, um, they keep up with that a little bit.
Depends on how, um, interesting they get.
And how busy he is, because that's one thing that, you know, he, like he said, he doesn't come to every meeting, and then he came to the last one, Darwin, and he missed it. But, um.
I'm talking to him now.
I know, I named it. But, um, in order to keep the retainer fee where it's at, he tries not to come to every meeting, but if we need him specifically or whatever, he will be here, so.
What is gasoline tax?
Gasoline tax, which one's that?
That we receive from the state for gasoline.
Yes, highway tax.
Is it highway, okay, okay.
So it'll go, it goes into streets.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and then just on, um, page nine, where it says, um, uh, patrol and school resource officers, you'll see that those are two negative numbers. Uh, our police chief was being paid out of those two line items, but she should have been paid out of chief line item, so we adjust the amount.
We haven't had a school.
Red resource officers, that's Travis out.
No, not for long, kind of.
Yeah, so that's why those are negative.
So they, I, do they have a question mark for those, but you just answer them?
Okay, and then, um, the wellness incentive down there, which is the five seventy-eight. We pay our employees a wellness benefit to go to the gym, it's a program that was set up, and reimburse them when they do go. So two times a year, they get reimbursed.
Hundred and twenty-five dollars, I think it is, hundred and twenty-five dollars?
Yeah, uh, so basically two fifty a year to go to the gym ten times a month, or to bring in a regiment that they are following. And so it was not in each fund, so we put that in each fund, so it will show. So that's why there's no dollar amount in it, and it's three hundred and fifty dollars over budget, but it's still within that. And then overtime for fire department courses, we over budget.
Are we going to be able to bring that down somehow? Is there a way to schedule it, bringing that overtime need?
We tried, you know, by hiring a part-time person, and we had hoped to hire another one, but that didn't work so well last Friday during interviews, so, um, we'll still try to get another, I think, I think the council, when I need to sit down and kind of talk about different structures, possibly something to be different, because that's killing us. And that's, if, if we wouldn't have been a part-time guy that is, you know, who's paid twelve dollars an hour to start with, and, and have stand out for two months, you know, I mean, oh my gosh. Yeah, so it's, that's just one of those, I don't know how you can ever estimate your overtime, why not, you can, I don't know. And that's by having seven people on my six, so it's just one of those that we think we need to address, okay?
It's been a problem for a long time, like with that, yeah.
Well, and two of them are pretty close to, close to maybe retirement, you know, they've been here long enough, and whether they are or not, I don't know for sure. And there's been runbids about that, but we still need to get some of the people trained, and, and, and if you've got a couple of part-time, don't you want a part-time dispatch? I would.
No, I've been in the office enough to know what they have to go through.
Any questions up? Yeah, so far.
Plus, I can't drive a fire truck. It's not hard.
And then in air quality on page eleven. We added the salary because Dawn gets paid a portion of her salary out of air quality, but it's never been included in air quality, so in order to get reimbursement, it really needs to have that broke out, so we decided to go ahead and put that in a, the air quality fund where it should be this year.
Good.
So.
Well, those wood chipper expenses, we haven't done the wood chipper thing for years, many, many.
I think we got the wood chipper back.
Do we have the chipper?
Uh-huh, it was down in, what, in Higgin, or down there somewhere at a, someplace out down there south, but I think we went and bought it last year, because they weren't getting it yours, huh?
Well, yeah, we haven't done it for a while, and they used to just use it for Christmas trees in that, right? You weren't even here then.
Really? That'd be kind of cool to do that, yeah, for Christmas tree.
But I remember when Ray was talking about it, and when Jeff and you got it.
Yeah.
That was last year.
But that's right, and, um.
What's her name?
You could either, they worked it in two different ways, you could bring your tree to them, you just chipped it, and, or some, uh, or sometimes they just, you know, on a certain day, they'd go up and down the streets, and you etch your tree out there, and you take it and move on.
You get away with it, I'm sure. I haven't heard of the chipper.
Anyway, I didn't know if we could just move that something else, or. We might be able to find out what we're going to do with it right now.
Now, if there's a possibility of using it at some point, maybe, yeah. So on page sixteen, where it says revenue investment earnings, with switching banks, should that be going up a little?
Or what, always?
Ignore the ten cents a month?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm surprised we got to anywhere fifty. So that maybe will increase at least slightly.
Yeah, we're hoping so.
Are we still getting payments from, um, sheriff's department and other things for the nine-one-one?
Well, that's very interesting, because, yes, we are, but Roberta didn't realize when it was nine-one-one dispatch that Ray put in his notes. I kept asking Shelley, I said, why would we bill or invoice our nine-one-one, or fire, or whatever for dispatch? Well, it's the other ones I haven't done, so.
Now you're catching up on that.
I didn't, I just didn't realize there were so many to bill out, and I had to do that every year, but we are doing that, I am doing that, so, yeah. In fact, we just, um, we got a call the other day from the border service, because they hadn't yet filled the nine-one-one. So now we know, so, yeah, we'll get it.
Good. So that will help our little revenue stream.
Yes. Have they, um, paid up until this time, or? Um, as far as you know, the last payment for the force service was December of sixteen, I think, or something like, about that time.
December of sixteen was the last round.
But I built them, are building, so, don't.
Cause the sheriff's office pays too.
Yeah, yeah, but for some reason, I could not figure that one out.
Yeah, it was very complicated for them, and they.
Same with everything else.
Based on the number of calls that they made.
Yeah.
Uh, that were made during a certain period of time, that's how they reset, yeah, ten, fifteen years ago.
But I am working on that, I haven't got them all developed.
Okay, but you know.
Yeah, but I'll just. And Mike, you were asking about the state highway funds there, do you see them, um, it's under that, um, street fund, twenty thirty-one fifty.
Which page?
Uh, to page nineteen. And we've brought in forty-seven thousand, three oh two to date.
Why do we have a Lake County Road Fund?
It's, it's, was in there when Ray did it, but I have no idea what that is, but.
I say just we take out that hundred and forty with it.
For our next one. And then we did, uh, I think we are going to get that, uh, SCA grant dollars, but there was an email that came out that all cities that apply are getting it, but I haven't seen any true confirmation.
The fifty thousand?
Mm-hmm, and then the CMAC funds, but that was for payment of, um, administrative, that's right, so.
So in every department, there's a PERS deferred, and they're all different.
Uh-huh.
So that's somewhere just a big love sign that we have.
That's a percentage of those salaries, or, yeah.
Okay.
Depending, yeah, would depend on how many people.
Yeah, of course, dispatch and fire, or not dispatch, fire and police would be much higher, because their rate's higher, or they were, you know, tier one, tier two, and.
Jeff is tier two.
Isn't he tier two? Marshall?
Marshall?
Mm-hmm.
No, he's.
Ops?
Ops.
Okay, so just a few of them are in one. Yeah. Operating, yeah.
Yeah, you've got, you've got, I think we've got like five employees that are tier one, tier two, and everyone else is ops. And so the, um, the deferment is to cover underfunding in the far future if needed. So everyone who has any PERS employees, PERS tier one, tier two employees have to have a certain percentage that goes into that account, even though we don't expect to spend it for years to come, yeah.
Just, did you say just PERS one?
One and two.
One and two, I see.
Because they, they rewrote the rules so that the OHS for people, um, what they get is whatever gets made off what they're getting put in the system now, rather than guaranteed returns.
I'd get my social security paid early, I was about to have it out.
Any more questions? Gone through?
Uh, I was looking at the pool fund, I guess, and I don't, uh... So that ten thousand that's unearned, is that just money we have in the budget that we didn't spend, or I don't, it's on page twenty-three.
And what's your question?
Well, on the pool of revenue, it says that we have, uh, we budgeted twenty-two thousand.
Right.
We actually spent eleven thousand.
Right.
So there's ten thousand that is really a budget item rather than money we made.
Well, and why, or what is it?
It just goes through the end of June, this budget.
So, so we still have to have a bunch of it in June. You know, May, June, um, you know.
Yeah.
That's what we're going to open up in May, but.
That's when we do our training and startup expenses and all that, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
The revenue should have came in in June, most likely for most people buying a family pass.
Yeah, right.
That would be reflected on this, but.
This was, this was the revenue budget.
Yeah.
So we anticipated that we would earn twenty-two thousand dollars.
Yeah.
As of now, we've only earned eleven thousand dollars.
Right.
So hopefully pool passes that get purchased in May and June will be enough to make up that remaining eleven, ten grand.
But that twenty-two wasn't, nobody ever expected to get twenty-two thousand out of that pool.
That was the budget.
And that's considering the money that we budgeted to support the pool, isn't it?
That's true.
It's anything that comes in for the pool, yeah.
There's already a different.
Somebody was smoking something from.
Just get it right, did you?
Twenty-two thousand.
The anticipated budget for the pool was ninety-four thousand.
Yeah.
So we transferred in sixty-seven from other sources and expected the pool to earn twenty-two on their own.
Not going to happen. Well, next budget, we'll go for that. It's really hard to budget when you don't know what's really happened before, but.
Depending on too many things.
And all the chuck wagon, um, things, those are on our budgets, but we also know that they are taken care of with their own fund.
Right, that four thousand dollars that you see in the revenue side is the check that they sent us to cover the four thousand dollars that was expended on AC.
And that's one of the things that we know is still an issue, because the expenses for the chuck wagon were rolled into other items and not itemized to that part of the budget, so we still need to go back and find them so that we can tell you what it could have found, who those expenses were. That's why it doesn't look like we've spent anything on the chuck wagon.
But we actually have, you know, like the six hundred dollars for, uh, the insurance, that's in our regular policy, but it was paid in June thirtieth last year, before June thirtieth, instead of waiting till July one, so it doesn't show it was paid in this year, so that's just sitting there for.
Oh.
Yeah, so, yeah, yeah.
Is the snow fund revenues, or the, the dollar per month on the water bills, is that coming in rapid enough for what we're about to get into? Maybe we won't, maybe it won't be available.
Twenty-four thousand. What page is that?
That's the page thirty.
Yeah.
Let's come in slow and steady.
So what's our, what's our ceiling when we shut it off?
Supposed to be fifty.
Fifty thousand.
Fifty, is when we shut it off, yeah. We used to make that, because we didn't, we didn't snow for like, what, three years or so.
We made this year.
Last, last year.
Plus, we don't have anybody to do it.
Used to a lot. I'll bet there'll be some independent contractors who show up and they know that that's a possibility.
Well, I think out of all that we asked, we had one come back and finally say he would do it, I'm not sure which come in that was, remember?
Well, we depended a lot on ARDU, but they're out of town, aren't they doing a job somewhere?
Badgers.
Is that right?
I think so.
I'm trying to think of, what, the, the, yeah, but, um, on about Jeff this morning, he said something that, I think they were the only ones that showed interest.
Pardon?
That's definitely who it was, that's still.
So they're still willing to do it. Doesn't the guys in town, that's what they really kept busy doing, yeah.
Well, what Jeff was talking about was checking with Delbert and Ron and letting them do our equipment that cleared driveway.
The guys that do the summer?
Yeah, or Delbert, McLean and Ron.
Well, Delbert and Ron.
And just pay them.
You have to pry Wilkie off of the beach somewhere. But there are people maybe that will take care of it.
Or this year, our guys might be able to handle it. On page fifty-five, the water and sewer revenue is a little bit lower than what we anticipated, it's only at thirty-four, thirty-three percent. So we're working on a few people, because they have a couple big deals, but, yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty low compared to what it should be, so.
Is it unpaid bills or is it unoccupied houses?
Both. There was one that just was sold this last week or so, but didn't check with us, and they have about a quarter thousand dollars water, water on.
Why doesn't?
Ameritile.
When they go through Ameritile, that should be something they check.
It was a fourth brochure.
Yeah. But still, it's still there, it should be on.
And that's one of the reasons we have to file leads.
Well, we can't on water.
We cannot list.
We can only file leads on sewer, because maybe fifty or whatever it was that was yours to go past.
Yes.
And I thought that for nine and a half years when I was in that town.
No, I'm for the revenue.
And it's, it's really an attorney's call, but, yeah, so. But I think what I want to do is talk to the people at Ameritile myself and just say, you know, when people come in to buy a house or going to buy a house.
You say, you're not required to check here, but we will for you.
Yeah.
That would be a nice source.
Just as a compliment, remember, and.
Is there another town, firm in town that does that too? Well, Brandy Etling's really good about checking with us. And usually Kristen at Ameritile always calls and checks, but if they have somebody different in there, they may.
Get a change in personnel and ask something that somebody didn't leave a note about, too.
Right, yeah, so.
Well, it's good to see some type of money in the wallet.
Well, I kind of apologize if it's taken so long, but we've had kind of a nightmare.
A nightmare, no doubt.
Yeah.
Good job with this, because.
Can fine tune from here, I'm sure.
Right, yeah. Can understand the thing.
Well, at least now, you said there are places where you need to switch things, but before you couldn't have told.
Right.
You know, now you can at least see, okay, this should, and you can do that tweaking of it.
Well, and that's what we've been doing, is, you know, she'll always be putting this up, and then she'll bring it to me and I'll say, "Oh, no, that shouldn't be in this fund", and so she'll, you know, get it and correct fund, and so we've been working really closely to get that done and done correctly, so I feel very good about it.
That's something else, is anything you see that doesn't look right or that, you know, we should never budget.
Don't be so needy, I'm not gonna see anything.
No, but anything.
Budgeting, no.
Anything that looks unusual or that we have a question about, that's a place for me to start researching, and until I start researching, I won't know what's there.
And I've seen all of the.
Did we even have the marijuana tax revenue thing, you know, put it in the budget?
Yeah, so we did, yeah. But I, like I said, I estimated two thousand or eight, so.
My idea of.
Yeah, we had no way to predict.
What are we doing with that? I mean, are we using it for general expenses out of general fund?
I believe the first part was supposed to raise the police.
I thought that was going to.
They decided not to.
Not to. In that new, uh, OLCC bill, and it said something about changing the law to where it could be spent for anything.
Now, I may have misread that, because I just looked through it really quickly, but you may want to look through that.
Yeah.
Because, did you read that?
No, I didn't.
If, if we had a choice, it would be nice to set those funds since they're kind of like, you know, windfalls in a sense, because we have not ever budgeted for them. If we could set that aside for some major purpose, we put it into some fund that we kind of hung on to, if we're allowed to, I didn't know that they stipulated that, but, um, I don't want.
Originally, it was.
Actually, that wasn't it?
Wasn't all to the police, but I'm not sure.
That was probably fourteen changes ago, maybe thirty or maybe a half.
I don't know, I think Mike might know more about it than I do.
But I think your research.
That initial payment went out to every government entity in the state of Oregon, and even the county received funds, the first initial, for like the first year's collections, they tallied it all up, and then they dispersed that, that revenue that they had collected and.
But that's the last payment they get, right?
That the county will get any, they, they won't get anymore, where the town will, because they.
We opted in.
Opted in, and so, and then, as you said, Roberta, if we enact a, a dollars initiative in an over-relection, we could go up to three percent locally, and those funds are the ones that I think are more critical as to spending for police.
I have a problem with that.
There, there, I think, three, three line items that you can spend those funds on.
So when we get our local ones.
We'll have to watch, yeah, that's, we really got.
Because I'm not sure which way it came, I knew part of it was police, but.
The initial house bill sent at least fifty percent of the marijuana tax would need to go to police and safety initiatives, but in the final markup that they passed, that stipulation was no longer there. So they are general fund dollars that we can spend however you choose.
I didn't read that right.
You did.
Well, we're gonna be rolling the money with Fairwood and Hotel Net.
Yes.
Eight thousand dollars isn't let you roll in.
It will increase as more people get licensed.
So are there any questions on the budget?
No. Good job in, in starting to clean this up for, for us to see, but certainly for you over a daily basis.
Makes a lot better. Well, just a discussion item, um, we've been doing a little, Shelley sent us some research, I sat in on some webinars about different ATM programs that can come through the town. Um, actually, one company is out of Bend, they came down on Friday, and it sounds like very, they are through Washington Mutual Bank, but they're, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, um, credit card processing, so that people can give us a credit card or debit card either across the counter or over the phone, or sign onto their smartphone and pay their bill, or sign onto their web and pay the bill, rather than having to bring us cash over time. Um, I talked to six different providers, and I have all the numbers and everything that goes with it. They will do everything from designing our website to letting us have credit cards, to providing the information and the training. I can talk ad nauseam about all six of them, there are some great similarities, the great differences are in price and level of service. Heartland Boletto is a partner of Washington Federal that we just agreed to move our banking to, they are out of Bend, and when I called to speak to them, they not only gave me really good answers over the phone, they drove to Lincoln to answer questions.
Get some big points right there.
Then the day after.
Oil CCC can manage it, right?
Right, yeah. And gave her a really convincing presentation, followed up by a conference call with one of their developers to let me answer those really nerdy computer questions that only I would think to ask, and then.
That's why we have you.
The day after that, Washington Federal called me to make sure that Nathan from Heartland had answered my questions, and they were following up to make sure he had followed up. And then after everything else is said and done, they end up being the cheapest as well, which is.
And they offer the services you want.
And they offer the services we want, and instead of needing six to eight weeks to get set up and started, they can have a credit card terminal in our office, but that's taking credit cards within ten days.
So what's the fee?
The fee.
And who pays the fee? Does the county, the city, or does?
The, the town would have to pay for the credit card machine, and depending on which one we choose, it's gonna be between a hundred and seventy-five and two hundred and fifty dollars. And then. No, that is to buy the machine, it belongs to us, one-time fee. Then because they are going to do the web portal and the web payments and all of that for us, there is a ten dollar a month maintenance fee for them to do that for us.
Ten dollars a month?
Ten dollars a month, right.
And then the fee of that one.
And there's another, there's more.
Okay. And then all the other fees would be charged to the customer as a convenience fee for the convenience of using their debit card.
Like three percent or whatever.
It's, it's three point three percent of which, of their bill. So for someone who's got the minimum water sewer charge of forty-six seventy-seven, it would be a dollar forty-five.
Which, that's not out of line, because you do that if you're paying the phone bill or anything else.
But it is to the customer, so.
But it goes.
Other than the ten dollars a month and the startup fee.
Right.
Or whatever.
That's it.
I like it that it's connected to Washington Federal.
And it saves us a ton of staff time, right?
Absolutely.
But can you also go in and, and choose to get your bill on your, in your email?
Yes.
Rather than having.
Being able to choose to get your bill. Being able to choose to get your bill email rather than getting a paper bill is part of the portal that they're charging us ten dollars a month to manage. Um, also, you can go into that portal and you can pay by check, um, or you can set it up to automatically pay out of your checking account or your credit card every single month.
Because for people who are out of town, you know, who have a, houses just sitting there, if they set that up on a monthly basis, and they're not gonna come back to a four-thousand-dollar bill.
Right.
That'll be paid monthly, and, or if people are going off on their vacation or something, and we're gone for the summer, it'd be great for the snowbird people we have.
Well, and we have so many people every day come in, when are you going to get a machine?
And one of the options, and one of the options that they've had that I was personally really impressed with, is when you set up auto pay, you can say, "Auto pay this bill", and you can say up to a certain dollar amount, so that if it, your bill is suddenly ten times the month as what it was the month before, it will still pay, or it'll make a partial payment, and then it will send you a email notification warning, you know, this auto pay was way out of line, go look at your bill, so that you're not gonna have.
But if they send you a bill on your email, you are gonna know too.
Right.
If you happen to look at it.
If you look at it. But for those people who just say, "Oh, it's auto paid, I'm not gonna look at it", they will get a warning if it's way out of line, so that they might have a break.
Say between your April bill and your June and July bills, there's a nice little jump there, if you're watering your lawn or anything, so, yeah, that, you might have something set up for like forty bucks, but you're gonna get sixty-five dollars sometime in that summer, so, yeah, that works.
So this, you said six different companies?
Yes.
Were those six being used by other jurisdictions, or?
Um, yes.
Some of them were, and so each is picking their own. Who was using the one that you thought you were recommending is the best?
Um, Heartland Boletto, um, they sent me a, a list of.
A bunch of different.
A bunch of them.
Using them?
Right. It's like, all, all six of these providers sent me, with the exception of BMS, sent me a list of at least a half dozen to more, and, you know, Express Pay is the Casell connected vendor there in the same town, they're right across the hall, they do lots of work together. Point and Pay is the provider that Roberta used in Nissa. Um, Value Payment Systems is the provider that the IRS uses for their online billing. BMS Technologies are the people we're current using to nail out our billing statements, so we already have a relationship with them. They were incredibly expensive, even giving us their, you're already a customer discount. Um, and then Payment Services Network is sort of, everyone knows them, they advertise a lot there, kind of.
So are we gonna keep this incredible, I mean, I understand they're incredibly expensive for this program, but are we, we've talked a little bit about changing companies for our billing.
Bring it out in-house.
Huh?
There's no way, no reason we can't use, do it in-house.
Then let's jump on.
Yeah, I never knew that it was.
Well, I haven't, no, I did it. I did it because it took three days when you're the only one to stuff bills, and then you have to take them to the post office, you're stuffing them, stamping them, and running them through the machines to pull them. So it took three days to stuff bills, because everybody was so busy, you were doing it by yourself.
But that's part of that job description, and, um, I, I believe that we are going to bring that back in, because we're paying almost, what, sixty, seventy thousand a year?
Well, if nothing else, if nothing else, for the money that we save, you hire a couple of high school kids.
To stuff.
To work two days a month or something like that, I mean, you know, say, come in after school and do this.
Well, and plus the stamping, I paid.
I was being.
We paid.
You can hire me for a part-time, I'd do that.
But see, and then you include your stamp, because you're gonna have more funds on your stamp machine.
No. Well, we pay for it. Our, our, we pay for it, that is.
And most of it goes up on the thirty-first.
We, but we don't spend as much as we used to, is what I'm saying.
I don't remember what it was.
Because I'm buying all this. It was over seven fifty, you know, a month for sending out that, and then we'd use all the postage on the machine, and then we'd have to read, and I'd have to take a check.
So my thought, and I, I was told that, they were told here, we couldn't do it, but I did it in Nissa. We started out with an envelope and a stuff where you had to stuff, you get a card, like we get.
That's, that's what I like.
And you use your bolt rate, and you do that, and, and the cards, you print them out on the laser printer, which we have laser printers, and they come three parts, the most time it's ripping those things apart, you know, and then you put them in a box, and all the out-town go in a certain area, whatever, but then you take them over and you use your bolt stamp, which we already just made.
I've never thought, I always thought that the cards were easier, and somebody said, "Well, you don't want any other people to see your bill", and I thought, "If your bill's that high, it..."
So a lot of the stuff that you were talking about, the thing like in-house stuff, doesn't need this council's approval to make those changes.
Right.
You guys see it.
Yeah.
Anybody making those changes.
Well, and that's what I thought, I told Shelley, we didn't even have to talk about the ATM machine thing, I said I could make that, you know, we could do that, but it's nice to know.
We fully endorse it.
It's something I wanted to get done.
It's like that book that sits, if you need a recommendation or, you know, a blessing on it, I mean, I think, as long as you've done your homework, I think.
We had, and I already told her this morning, I said, "We really don't have to go to council", but I knew we had a few minutes, so I was like, "Let's just let you know, keep you in the loop that we are".
I'd like to know what's going on. Well, it's nice to know that you're there, and we, you, you have no idea how many questions we feel on a, you know, just walking through Safeway, and so anytime you have that extra little bit of information, "Oh, yeah, this, they're gonna start doing that, yeah, this", you know, so it's nice to have that for answers.
So probably by mid-February, because we still have to get everything set up and stuff, and I'm not sure, but it may be quicker than that, but that drop date would probably be February when we got it.
It's a week.
Yeah.
We can definitely have a, a credit card machine at Tana's desk, so she can start taking credit card payments probably by the first of February, and I would anticipate that by the March bill, they're only, you know, just on your bill, you can now pay by credit card, log on to this web address, or however we want to roll that out, yeah.
Yeah, so that's what I like.
Definitely get it done by the first of March.
In my email, and then.
I got to check my email on our annual releases.
I will call it above you.
Do they ask you about?
But you don't have to, because of the bill in the mail.
I heard Sharon make a comment a minute ago about the OLCC, and I, I don't think the OLCC has any reason to come to Liffey. I heard Sharon make a comment a minute ago about the OLCC and I, I don't think the OLCC has any reason to come to Lead View at this point. I don't think there's been a request from anyone to come to Lead View. So whatever information you're getting.
I thought they had to come.
And I, and I've heard others say the same thing.
Elizabeth said they were just waiting.
When those applications are put in with OLCC.
I, I thought they, they haven't been filed yet.
It's not time yet. They're not ready. They have to build the permanent process that they're going through right now. And once that's all completed, then they can file. But they have to have a longer ducks in a row as.
They have, they're going to expect the bill.
So I, you know, I, I don't think there's any need to blame.
Why not blame it? I just thought.
No, but I've heard, heard others say.
Yeah, but I do think after talking to Elizabeth, she's, I mean, they're getting their building ready and she said that they have to wait for the OLCC inspector to come inspect the building. Everything else is ready.
Yeah, but they have, or.
But I don't know.
Yeah, I think that they have to have everything pretty well established again, as far as my understanding and talking to the OLCC.
Anyway, and I know that hers, she has an open house on Saturday for, just to show what she has. Like I don't know if she'll have product in there. I would think not yet maybe, but I don't know.
No.
She better not.
Yes.
No, it's a part of that. That, I think that the, the one thing that's, that the OLCC will, will probably be looking at first is once they get their safe installed, to my knowledge, not that it's been done in any of the locations. Because that's one of the criteria that it has to be safe keeping. So when all of the vendors, dispensaries are actually ready to do business, then they'll file the application to the OLCC. And then, then the OLCC will have a reason to come there.
Is that when they do background checks on employees?
Well, the, the, see, they have to give the, the dispensary owner has to give that information in their application. And that's not been done yet by, as far as I know. They had to provide the Lex form, I think, just to get going. But that doesn't give them.
And the two over here did, but he has not.
Hasn't gone to that extent yet. So there's, there's still a lot of work that has to be done locally. I, I did talk to David Ondoris and he told me that he was looking to have his completed, I'm thinking, and ready probably for inspection in March right now, is what he thrown at me and that's been true three weeks ago.
And he told me about the end of February maybe, but I don't.
Well, it could be since, yeah, maybe he's moved up on it. So we've talked to him since I.
Yeah, just, well, when it happens to happen.
But we do need to be thinking of, you know, if we want to, to garner some tax funds from those businesses in our community, which I think we should since we opened it up towards those community businesses. We should reap some benefits and I'm not sure of the process we need to go through, but we need to look very closely at putting it on the, the November ballot.
And I don't know if it was approved already to do that, but Jeff and I've been working on that, get it on the ballot in November. So I think that was part of.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we all pretty much.
Yeah, okay. But we're going to prepare the ballot stuff to get on it in November. So we're already going to do that.
In this, we have a question not on marijuana, but when we were, I noticed this and then I forgot to mention. When we were going through our budget, we go to page eleven and then skip to sixteen.
Oh, well, there were some pages in there that were not too relevant right at the moment. They're kind of like different funds that, there's a few. Go ahead and explain it if you want, but there's.
When you, when you print the financial statements.
It's fifty-five pages.
It's ninety pages.
Oh, nine. I thought it was fifty-five.
Yeah, it's ninety pages at this point. And some of them are funds that are basically not being used anymore, that haven't been continually gotten, gotten rid of in the system, that I can't delete until after we close the last fiscal year. Some of them are like the bike path fund. So you have a page for revenues and a page for disbursements and there's one number on those two pages because there's no activity.
So you just consolidate.
So I just consolidated to the things that might actually be interesting to you. I would assume that at least a couple of times a year, we will give you the entire monolithic novel, but.
If you want it.
And what might be nice, just so we don't print it all, is if we just do it on the screen or something.
Oh, oh, we could do that.
Same range.
And then you can just scroll right past it.
Right. And then the ones that we didn't include probably should have, are the geothermal funds, the very well fund and the EOC fund. We probably should have put it in there and we will next time.
And those are all looking fine.
Yeah. We just wanted to get you guys kind of.
So, yeah, I think we appreciate that. Anything that had any customs or red flags, I definitely.
One of the things that would be really nice is this breaks down each line item. It'd be really nice to see each department. You know, revenue, expenses, net loss, and then know that there's a transfer coming from somewhere else. But just break down each budget that way so we can really try and focus on the order now or try to come up with some solutions.
Well, the one that's hard to break out is your general fund because you have police, fire and the general.
Well, that can be a summary of, of all the general fund and because there's different.
So you're just looking for a summary page.
Yeah, just a summary page with, which has not the line item, none of the line item. Just, just a.
That we can.
That revenue line.
We're finding all sorts of stuff that we do.
Well, that's just a quick glance of where we're at and where we can see.
Well, and maybe we will have that for our next goal setting, kind of to look at that. I think that would help us see where we need to go maybe, because I would really like to do that. I had to cancel last time because I got a bad headache. But either next Tuesday or the following Tuesday, whatever, we can get a goal setting session set up. I don't know your guys' availability, but.
Not good till March.
The what?
Not good till March.
It's already a quarter over.
I'm trying to run, I'm trying to run UBL. Basketball for the kids.
We have anything else under the work session?
Priorities, priorities.
Then we'll close your work session at four o'clock.